All right. We hereby open the work session of the Springfield Planning Commission meeting. We have a rule call, please.
Chair Rhodes Die.
Here.
Vice Chair Buck has an excused absence. Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Stout.
Here.
And Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Do we have any members of the audience?
We do have someone attending.
Okay, great. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online, please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. This is a meeting where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to address the Planning Commission later tonight in our regular meeting which follows the work session around 7:00 PM. First agenda item is Housing in Non-Residential Areas Code Amendments with Steph, Haley Campbell, and Senior Planner.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening. As mentioned in the agenda, this is a work session for proposed changes to the Development Code for Income-Qualified Housing on Property Owned by Religious Nonprofits in 4.7.370, Income-Qualified Housing in 4.7.405, and various other sections that we're going to get into in the presentation. Also with me is Chelsea Hartman, Senior Planner. So we're going to start a prerecorded presentation. Chelsea's going to share it to the screen. There will be audio, and it's just a 24, 25-minute presentation. And then we just ask that you hold the questions till the end, and then we'll open them.
Hello, and thank you for attending this work session to discuss the Housing in Non-Residential Areas Code Amendments. My name is Haley Campbell. I'm a Senior Planner with the City of Springfield and the Project Manager for this code amendment. Also with me is Chelsea Hartman, Senior Planner. In a minute, we will start the presentation. As this work session is prerecorded, we ask that you hold all questions until the end. We have set aside 20 to 30 minutes for Q and A. In 2023, the Oregon Legislature made efforts to address the state's housing crisis with new laws and $1.2 billion in additional spending on housing and homelessness. On any given night in 2022, at least 18,000 Oregonians were homeless, and state analysts predict Oregon needs to build at least half a million homes over the next two decades to keep up with demand. The legislature passed several bills that have prompted the following housing opportunities in Non-Residential Areas Amendments to the Springfield Code. The first is House Bill 2984, Commercial to Residential Building Conversions, which took effect January 1st, 2024. The bill requires local governments to allow conversion of a building from commercial to residential use without requiring a zone change or conditional use permit as long as the land is not zoned for industrial use. The next is House Bill 3151, Manufactured Dwelling Parks on Non-Residential Lands. It took effect January 1st, 2024. Manufactured housing makes up 8% of Oregon's total housing and 16% of the affordable housing stock, according to the American Community Survey data collected between 2013 and 2017. That's why House Bill 3151's major impact on Springfield is to allow manufactured dwelling parks serving households with incomes of 120% or less of area-meeting income, or AMI, to be added to the bill's definition of affordable housing. The bill also adds property owned by a housing authority, manufactured dwelling park nonprofit cooperative, or nonprofit corporation organized as a public benefit corporation whose primary purpose is the development of affordable housing to the list of properties where local government is required to allow income-qualified housing. The last is House Bill 3395, Residential Use of Commercial Lands. It took effect June 30th, 2023. House Bill 3395 allows housing within commercial land use districts if it is affordable to households with incomes of 60% AMI or less, or for mixed-use structures with ground-floor commercial with residential units that are affordable to moderate-income households, or 80% to 120% AMI. The bill requires cities to apply the residential density level most comparable to the commercial density currently allowed in the land use district. You might be asking yourself, what is affordable housing? And why are staff using the term "income-qualified housing"? To start, we thought it might be helpful to look at an example of the housing continuum. Often, the phrase is used for unhoused and low-income populations. But the City of Eugene and the City of Springfield have expanded the use of the term to include moderate-income and market-rate housing. Thinking of housing as a continuum allows us to consider the metro areas, diverse housing needs, and the impact of supply and demand. If one portion of the continuum is missing or stressed, the available options for certain members of the community become limited, and the remaining areas experience more stress from increased demand. The continuum is broken up into five primary categories that range from community members experiencing homelessness without emergency shelter to those earning over 120% of the area median income. Areas overlap exist between each defined bubble of affordability to demonstrate the transition from one bubble to another. Therefore, staff renamed "affordable housing" to "income-qualified housing" to avoid confusion between the terms in the code. Across the US, housing costs are considered affordable if the monthly rent or mortgage on a property add up to no more than 30% of gross household earnings. Income-qualified housing, on the other hand, encompasses housing that is specifically for households making 0% to 120% of the area-meeting income in our Development Code. Area-meeting income means the median income for the metropolitan area in which housing is located, as determined by the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, and adjusted for household size based on information from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The examples here are for an individual and a family of four from HUD's 2023 fiscal year. The median family income in Eugene-Springfield is $89,100. So at 50% AMI for an individual, that person would make $29,550 per year, and for a family of four, at 50% AMI, would make $42,150. Next, we're going to address how we are implementing the House Bills 2984, 3151, and 3395 code changes. This project is a continuation of work related to a larger Springfield Development Code update project that has been ongoing since 2018, involving a phased plan to update the entire Springfield Development Code. Updating the Development Code to support efficient, timely, and clear development review is part of Springfield's housing strategy. This project specifically revised the code to: One, address state law related to single-room occupancy. Two, add the conversion of commercial to residential use requirements in House Bill 2984. Three, make significant changes to Springfield Development Code 4.7.370 for income-qualified housing on property owned by religious nonprofits. Four, make changes to Springfield Development Code 4.7.405 to implement bills related to income-qualified housing. And five, address other changes throughout the code, including significant changes to 4.7.100 for various districts, 4.7.375 through 4.7.385 for architectural design and multiple-unit housing, and minimum development standards 5.15.110 and site plan review for multiple-unit housing 5.17.110. House Bill 3395 established a density standard for single-room occupancy, or SRO, units. The bill states that each local government shall allow the development of an SRO with up to six units on each lot or parcel, zoned to allow for the development of a detached, single-family dwelling, and with the number of units consistent with the density standards of a lot or parcel, zoned to allow for the development of residential dwellings with five or more units. Staff interpret this to mean that in the R1 district, a lot or parcel can contain up to six SRO units. In the R2 and R3 districts, where multiple-unit dwellings are allowed, the density of SROs will match the density in the applicable district. To reflect these changes, the code amended the lot area, dimensions, and density standards in the residential districts and the definition section. The next topic is in regards to the creation of the new section 4.7.215, Conversion from Commercial to Residential Use. House Bill 2984 requires local governments to allow conversion of a building from commercial to residential use without requiring a zone change or conditional use permit as long as the land is not in an industrial district. To make the code clearer and easier to interpret, staff reorganized and amended Springfield Development Code 4.7.370 for income-qualified housing on property owned by religious nonprofits. The title of the section was amended. Staff moved the definition of "place of worship" from this section to the definition section in 6.1.100 and cleaned up one error in the code. Substantial changes were made to 4.7.405 for income-qualified housing. Staff reorganized the standards in 4.7.405, A through D, to make the code clearer and easier to interpret, and to address House Bills 2984 and 3151. Staff created subsections E and F in response to House Bill 3395. Sections A and B address the purpose and applicability of income-qualified housing. The rest of this section of code was amended as follows. For 4.7.405C, staff amended the section by: One, including a manufactured dwelling park that serves populations with incomes of 120% of the area-meeting income within the definition of income-qualified housing. Two, including the addition of several income-qualified housing owners, namely, those owned by a nonprofit corporation organized as a public benefit corporation whose primary purpose is the development of income-qualified housing, a housing authority, manufactured dwelling park nonprofit cooperative, or a utility provider who conveys property for one of the listed owners. And three, reorganizing existing code language into various subsections for clarity. For 4.7.405D, staff amended the section by: One, creating a site suitability subsection, a development standard subsection, and a density and height in residential district subsection. Two, addressing the lack of income-qualified middle housing standards in SDC 4.7.405. And three, stating what the density standards are for development in non-residential districts. This amendment is not a requirement in the House Bills, but the code does not currently have density and height standards in many districts that don't outright allow housing, including industrial districts, medical service districts, et cetera. Staff provided three options in the draft code and are seeking feedback from the Planning Commission. The three options staff are seeking feedback on is for density and height for income-qualified housing in non-residential districts. The first option would not apply any new or different density or height standards for income-qualified housing in non-residential districts. Development would be limited by existing standards in the applicable district, e.g., height, setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. The second option would apply the density and height of the R2 district. The density in the R2 district is 14 to 28 units per net acre, and the height is 50 feet maximum. The third option would apply the density and height of the R3 district. The density in the R3 district is 28 to 42 units per net acre, and there is no maximum height. At the end of the presentation, we will open the work session up for discussion and questions on these options. To comply with House Bill 3395, staff amended 4.7.405E by: One, allowing income-qualified housing in commercial districts and in mixed-use structures, provided they meet the area-meeting income thresholds shown in the code. Two, listing the land use districts that allow only commercial uses and not industrial uses, a requirement in the House Bill, to be neighborhood commercial, community commercial, major retail commercial, general office, mixed-use commercial, Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use, or Glenwood Office Mixed Use districts. For 4.7.405F, staff amended the section by: Creating a site suitability subsection for requirements where this type of housing is not permitted, and creating a standards and procedures subsection for this type of housing. A requirement in House Bill 3395 is to apply the most comparable residential density to the allowed commercial uses in the subject district. Staff are seeking feedback from the Planning Commission on two options in the draft code. The first option applies the existing density standards of the residential districts to the commercial districts, and references the existing density standards in the mixed-use commercial, Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use, and Glenwood Office Mixed Use districts. It also references the lot area, dimensions, coverage, setbacks, and height standards of the commercial districts. The development standards in the mixed-use commercial, Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use, and Glenwood Office Mixed Use are referenced and stay the same. Here is a table comparing the density, lot area dimensions, lot coverage, setbacks, and height standards for the first option. As the House Bill requires staff to apply the most comparable residential density to the allowed commercial uses, staff reviewed the Springfield Comprehensive Plan Land Use Element, which carried over planned designation descriptions from the Metro Plan for Guidance. The Springfield Comp Plan stated that the neighborhood commercial comparable density is the R1 district, that R2 and R3 density can be allowed in the major retail commercial and community commercial districts, and that the general office district is intended to be an office-transition area between residential and more intense commercial in the community commercial and major retail commercial districts. So R2 density was applied. The densities in the mixed-use commercial, Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use, and Glenwood Office Mixed Use were kept the same. At the end of the presentation, we will open the work session up for discussion and questions on this option. The second option contains minimum densities for commercial districts and the mixed-use commercial district when residential only and when part of a mixed-use development. There are no maximum densities in this section because neither the commercial districts nor mixed-use districts have a maximum density for residential. In the commercial districts and mixed-use commercial district, the mixed-use commercial district development standards apply. The development standards in the Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use and Glenwood Office Mixed Use are referenced and stay the same. Here is a table comparing the density, lot area dimensions, lot coverage, setbacks, and height standards for the second option. As the House Bill requires staff to apply the most comparable residential density to the allowed commercial uses, staff reviewed the standards in the existing mixed-use residential and mixed-use commercial districts. The density standards in the existing mixed-use residential district were applied to the commercial districts, and the mixed-use commercial district when building income-qualified housing under House Bill 3395. The development standards like lot area dimensions, lot coverage, setbacks, and height were taken from the existing mixed-use commercial district for the commercial districts and mixed-use commercial district. The development standards in the Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use and Glenwood Office Mixed Use are referenced and stay the same. At the end of the presentation, we will open the work session up for discussion and questions on this option. Here is a table comparing the density, lot area dimensions, lot coverage, setbacks, and height standards for the Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use and Glenwood Office Mixed Use districts. These are the same standards in the existing code and are not subject to change. As stated previously, at the end of the presentation, we will open the work session up for discussion and questions on the two provided options. Finally, we are going to address other related code changes identified by staff that are related to the Housing in Non-Residential Areas Code Amendments but are not requirements in the House Bills. A separate but related topic to the Housing in Non-Residential Areas Code Amendments were amendments to the standards in 4.7.100. Staff moved specific development standards from 4.7.100 that reference a particular land use district to that district. These amendments will make the code more user-friendly by listing standards that apply to a district in one place instead of needing to reference another chapter in the code. But what does this look like? A good example of this is the creation of Springfield Development Code 3.4.330, specific development standards in the Booth-Kelly Mixed Use District. In the current Development Code, you can find public and private park standards for the Booth-Kelly Mixed Use District in 4.7.200, residential uses in commercial districts in 4.7.210, and warehouse commercial, retail, and wholesale in 4.7.245. To make the code more user-friendly, staff moved these standards to the Booth-Kelly Mixed Use District section of code in 3.4.330 and created sections specific to these types of uses. What other standards were removed from 4.7.100? Other standards that were removed from 4.7.100 led to: One, the creation of new 3.2.300 for commercial districts. Two, the creation of new 3.2.428 for industrial districts. Three, the creation of new 3.2.270 for the public land and open space district. Four, the amendment of 3.3.825 Development Standards for the urbanizable fringe overlay district. Five, the creation of new 4.7.330 Public and Private Parks in Residential Districts as the standards in 4.7.200 Public and Private Parks apply to residential districts. And six, the creation of new 4.7.335 Professional Offices in Residential Districts as the standards in 4.7.190 Professional Offices apply to residential districts. The next item is changes to 4.7.375 through 4.7.385 for multiple-unit housing. For consistency and clarity, staff moved the standards in 4.7.385B, Building Orientation, and C, Building Form, to 4.7.375 to match the clear and objective standards that already contain Building Orientation and Building Form standards in the current code. Staff amended 4.7.380 to clarify that multiple-unit housing is allowed in other districts besides R2 and R3. And staff renumbered 4.7.385 following the removal of Sections B and C that were moved to 4.7.375. Lastly, staff made amendments to 5.15.110 for Minimum Development Standards and 5.17.110 for Site Plan Review when building multiple-unit housing. This included clarifying that the MDS process does not apply to new multiple-unit housing. A Site Plan Review or Multiple Unit Housing Review in 4.7.380 for the clear and objective tract would apply, and amending the Site Plan Review applicability standards to clarify one incidence where a multiple-unit housing Site Plan Review is required when an addition, expansion, or change of use is for a non-residential use in a land use district that is not residential and located within 50 feet of a residential land use district or residentially designated land. An exception to this has been provided when a multiple-unit housing development can meet the clear and objective standards in 4.7.380. So what are the next steps? On April 2nd, the Springfield Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on these amendments. A recommendation could then be forwarded to the Springfield City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners, who must co-adopt the amendments. We now like to revisit the draft code options presented in 4.7.405 and open the floor up to the Planning Commission for feedback as well as questions.
And then we're just going to pull the presentation back up so we can go back to those feedbacks. Okay, so the first thing that we requested feedback on, and we discussed that in the Planning Commission briefing memo, which hopefully you guys had a chance to look at. There are basically like three options presented in this. So the first option is for density and height for income-qualified housing in non-residential districts. So under our current code, we allow income-qualified housing in areas where we typically wouldn't build housing, right? We might put it in industrial district, or a medical service district, or other districts, again, where we don't typically require housing or allow housing. So one, this first option that we're asking feedback on is, would not apply any new or different density or height standards for income-qualified housing in non-residential districts. So it would be limited by the existing height or setbacks or lot cover standards in the code. And then the second option and third option, you would apply the R2 district height and density standards to income-qualified housing in non-residential districts. And then the third option, you'd apply R3 district, the height and density standards for income-qualified housing in non-residential districts. So any, yes, any questions?
So, uh, we're talking about income-qualified housing. So we're already talking about, and which yourselves are like, you know a lot about that stuff. Jump in, but like, I mean, we're, we're talking about maybe projects that don't necessarily pencil in less than they get grants and other sources of funding, right? So when we apply additional extra standards to those, we're making them even harder to pencil in, or making them need more outside funding? So can you tell us what the benefit of doing that would be?
Yes, so I think maybe the benefit is for clarity. So I think, again, right now, we don't have any density or height standards. If somebody comes in and they read our existing code, and they're like, I want to build multiple-unit housing in that district, but I don't know how tall I can build it, how dense I can build it. We don't have those standards in our code currently. They do not exist. So that might be one reason to apply it. And then on the flip side, like you said, you're applying, like a negative, a drawback would be you're applying those standards to something that we might not want to, right? Some great feedback that we had from a workshop that we hosted in February was, well, if a developer comes in and say they do want to build housing, well, now you're limiting it to this tall and this many units. Versus if we keep it as it is in the code, it would just be whatever the code currently allows. So maybe the, the current code would say you can go 16 feet tall, and then your minimum setbacks and your, you know, maximum lot coverage. That would be the only thing that would limit it by. But you'd have to maybe look at the development code a little bit clearer than what we have or what we could put in that section of code. Does that make sense?
Right, so you're, the positive is you're providing clarity. The negative is you're restricting maybe something that somebody would want to do.
Exactly.
I think to respond to that, yeah, the way I see it is, I mean, when we're looking at, at, working for a developer of income-qualified housing for the county housing authority, one thing that we're looking at when we're looking at sites is how many units can we build on the site, depending on the, the lot size? And that, under option one, we would have, like Haley was saying, a little less clarity. When we're looking at sites, we would see a lot and be like, well, how many? Usually, it's how many, how many units could we build there? Does it make sense for us? Would it pencil? Typically, we have an idea of it pencils it, the greater density we get, like the more units we can fit on a site, the more, the more we can get that to work. So having that clarity is helpful when we're looking at sites. But again, when we think about the actual developments, and especially if we're looking at commercial zones, where this is the only allowable housing type, and commercial buildings tend to be larger than most residential buildings, then you could have us, have a case, if we're looking at option three and certainly option two, that if we're limiting it by units per acre, then that could potentially lead to smaller buildings where those, all, all of the residential buildings that are allowable in that area are dwarfed by the typically larger commercial uses. So maybe you have, they, they don't, the residential buildings are not in fitting with the, the rest of the neighborhood architecturally.
Okay, so, I guess, well, I'll have a question. What do you think the typical developer of this income-qualified housing would want us to choose?
I would say that more, having more flexibility is always helpful. I have a slight lean towards option one because it allows us to, to look at, I mean, we have a little less clarity about how many units we could fit on a site and without bringing in an architect and saying, okay, if the setbacks are, are this big, how, how tall can we build it? But generally, I, I'm willing to bet that for most lots, especially in commercial districts where the lots tend to be a little bit larger anyway, that we could fit more units than we could under the second and third options on most lots. And that would be preferable, not only for a developer, but for the community as a whole, just being able to build more affordable housing on the, the lots that we have.
So let me clarify, you, so you're saying option one, you can push the envelope more than the other two. You can try to accommodate those things that you'd like to do, that pencil better than restricted under two or three.
Likely, depending on the lot size, you could, I could theoretically see a scenario in which the, the density requirements under two and even three could be a limiting factor in that you couldn't build as big of a building or as many units as you would want if it was just the height setback lot, lot coverage requirements that are just typical for any other building in that area.
Well, with option one, what I understood, it had very, very few restrictions then, so I mean, if, if somebody came in and they wanted to build a twelve-story building for that, I mean, the only thing that would include that would be the setbacks and things like that. Is that, is that how it would work? I mean, I ask, I don't, I just.
So usually, like I said, there, it's the existing standards in the applicable district, so, like, I don't know off the top of my head, but most of the time, like, there's a max height for those districts already. Only in the R-three do we say no maximum, so even if you went to a commercial or industrial district, there, there could be a, a maximum height of sixty feet.
Okay, okay, I should, that, that's what I was trying to get, I mean, I come, I come up with the, you know, Old By Skinner's Buoy where they built that one, there, you know, many, you know, four decades ago, you know, and that, you know, and that was obviously.
Yeah, absolutely. I would think that typically, I mean, like, yeah, like Haley was saying, that the height coverage might be that, that you think about what's allowable in commercial, like you think of a typical warehouse, like a Buy Mart is probably a little bit taller than maybe the average two-story building. But if you can't build taller than, than, than warehouse, then you wouldn't be able to, the, even a residential use wouldn't be able to go above that.
That helps cover, I was just trying to say, if there's no restrictions, then, okay, I get what you're, okay, good, thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, um, this isn't a public hearing, but it is a public meeting, so I'll just, given the discussion, say that if you have a potential conflict of interest, you may want to declare that as we're discussing these code amendments.
So I'll go ahead and just mention my potential conflict of interest as a housing developer who builds income-qualified housing.
Uh, well, I mean, I am leaning toward option one, but I'm interested in everybody else's continued. Go ahead.
So I'm curious about, so Springfield in terms of building heights. So if we start building up taller, that's gonna bring some other requirements. Fire department's gonna have to have different kind of gear or something. And, and then the particular location, if you got a twelve-story building going up, you're gonna need a lot more utilities, dense, dense utilities, so I'm, I'm not sure how to ask a question, but obviously that's a factor that Springfield has to consider. And so, perhaps two or three might be better to help control that. So can you help me with that?
Yes, so I believe what we have, if you've looked through our draft of our code, is we actually say in here that these uses have to have sufficient access to that infrastructure requirement. So you have to have sufficient access to streets, to stormwater, to sanitary services, all of those uses. So that would be factored into however tall they build it, they choose to build.
So the city, assuming for the moment that height was a restrict, height was restrictions was a, something the city wanted to do, so they would simply not provide the fire equipment necessary for a higher-story building, and then they, then the city could refuse it?
That's correct.
Well, let me add in, I mean, I think with fire in particular, there's usually multiple options of how you can adjust that, so there could be sprinkling, there could be other ways of constructing it to meet fire code.
Which drives up the price of the building, which, that would be, so I guess what I'm saying is, if you, if you have to make those accommodations, that will drive up the price of the building, and again, if your desire is to keep the height of the building down, then you could control the height of the buildings by those kinds of things. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I think, under the first option, there are height limits in some of the districts, but not all of the districts, and so they would have to comply with any height limitations. If there is a height limitation in that district, if there isn't, then there, there wouldn't be that as a limitation, so then it would come down to like water pressure. Is there enough water pressure to be able to reach the higher floors of that building, and that's really a sub-issue more than it is a city issue.
But those constraints are all baked into the code already, because they have to figure out water pressure and fire and everything before they get a permit. So it's not like they're gonna come in and build a twenty-story building that we don't have the infrastructure to support.
Commissioner Staub has his hand raised.
Yeah, go ahead. Hi, um, so I'm curious, I know it's not exactly one of these options, but would, i- i- in this case, a, a two-part question, one, would, is it possible that the potential buildings on these, within these options, so like, we're talking, you know, within the commercial district, we're building a income-qualified housing, is it possible that, that a commercial is still an option, like say on the ground floors? And then my second question is, is it possible that along with constructing the, the income-qualified housing, that within the same projects, not only income-qualified housing, but also, also market housing could be mixed in within the same building, let's say? Is that possible?
Excellent questions. So the first question was about ground floor commercial, and under this first section, the section that you're looking at on the screen, that is not a restriction at all. You know, you could, you could do commercial on the ground floor, residential above. And then, you know, another bill that we talked about later, thirty-three ninety-five, that's where we go a little bit more into market rate housing. So this section right here is more focused on that income-qualified housing section. And again, there's kind of parameters in there. We talked about in the very beginning about area meeting income, what those thresholds are. So right now, in the current code, it's sixty to eighty percent of the area meeting income. That's what we're looking at here on the screen. But again, when we get to House Bill thirty-three ninety-five, which we're gonna ask feedback on, those were the other two options we discussed, that's where you more see the market rate housing, and that's where the area median income has increased even beyond that sixty to eighty percent threshold to eighty to a hundred and twenty percent area meeting income threshold. So for, right here, it's a little restricted based off of income, but under the other option, which we'll get into, there are more market rate housing options.
Got it. I, I think just, so my feedback in general, obviously, we're trying to comply with a little bit of state mandate and also trying to figure out, okay, what's the right thing for Springfield? Just my opinion is simply that large clusters of, of income-qualified housing grouped together seem to be less resilient than ones that are mixed in with more market rate housing, just a any option that promotes a greater mix of those things, and I'm sure, you know, I don't know, there's a longer discussion, was probably going to see, I think, a greater longevity, but at that said, we all gotta get some more housing in our city, so that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions on this section before we move on to one and two, which are a bit bigger, bigger beast?
Yes, I don't know if I'm on section one or two. I, I'm, I'm looking at the thirty-three ninety-five.
That's the next section.
All right, I'll wait.
I'll just make one, one additional comment on the height restrictions as well, and especially in areas where there are no height restrictions for a specific commercial area, is that, I mean, we're talking about income-qualified housing, and in ninety-nine point nine percent of the cases, that in, income qualification is in place because a public, a public subsidy is in place, and ninety-five percent of the time, that income qual, that public subsidy is from a federal source rather than a state or a local source. And for all federal sources, it becomes exceedingly difficult to go over four stories. That there are a lot more requirements that, that, especially environmental review requirements, that make it difficult to, to pencil and go above four stories for development. So in terms of, of like a twelve-story tall development, it may be allowable, but in the current environment, that, there's not much appetite for that.
The next section.
Well, while we're transitioning, Christina messaged me that she doesn't think that you actually would have a potential conflict of interest since you work for a public entity. Oh, so that might be something we wanna just follow up with. Sure, I'm understanding that correctly.
Yeah.
I can jump in real quick. The, the definition of a business with which a public official is associated includes businesses operated for profit, and then some exceptions for certain businesses operated for the purpose of generating revenue that are non, that are non-for-profits. And so government agencies generally do not fall within the category of a entity that's operated for revenue. But that's definitely something I can do a little more research on if that would be helpful.
And, and, in this discussion as kind of a moot point, Christina, it might be helpful for future discussions, but since this is just a work session, and I won't actually be able to attend, unfortunately, our next session where we will be voting on this. So I'm happy to mention it in, in the context of this work session as a, as a potential conflict of interest, but I won't actually be voting on the, on the item next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, yes, all right, so the next option, so as we kind of mentioned in the briefing memo, we have to apply comparable density for residential in commercial districts or as part of a mixed-use structure. So the first option that you're seeing on the screen, this is to comply with House Bill thirty-three ninety-five. It applies the existing density standards of the residential districts to the commercial districts, and then references the existing density standards in the mixed-use commercial, Glenwood Commercial Mixed-Use and Glenwood Office Mixed-Use. And then it also references the lot area dimensions, coverage, setbacks, and height standards of the commercial districts, and the development standards in the mixed-use commercial, Glenwood Commercial Mixed-Use, and Glenwood Office Mixed-Use are referenced, and they stay the same. So what this kind of looks like, I apologize, this is kind of small. That was not the intention, but it was to kind of provide you guys with what this would look like. So basically, what you're seeing on the screen is a comparison from our comprehensive plan to, for commercial to residential. So in that neighborhood commercial, the comparable density would be the R-one district. In the community commercial, the comparable density would be the R-two district. In the major retail commercial, the comparable density is the R-three district, and the general office is that R-two district. And then again, you're seeing the mixed-use commercial density standards. That is how it is existing in the code. And then the, the lot area dimensions, lot coverage, setbacks, and height, again, those are the same as, yeah, the same as, as referenced in the code. So the reason why we might not want to use this option is it's a little bit more complicated. Again, we're doing a one-to-one comparison, and it's, it changes based off of whichever commercial district you're looking at. And then I'm gonna actually have us go forward just a minute to the second option. So the second option, again, you're, you have to do that comparable residential density, so you're seeing minimum densities for commercial districts and the mixed-use commercial when residential only, and when part of a mixed-use development. So House Bill thirty-three ninety-five allows you to do residential and commercial districts, and then residential in a mixed-use structure when the ground floor is commercial and the rest would be residential. And then we applied no maximum densities in this section, because there are no maximum densities in the commercial districts or mixed-use districts, you just have that minimum density requirement. And then again, in the commercial districts and the mixed-use district, the mixed-use development standards apply, so you're looking at your lot area dimensions, lot coverage, those things. That's what you're looking at as the comparison. And then the Glenwood Commercial Mixed-Use and Glenwood Office Mixed-Use, they're referenced and they stay the same. So the table is a little bit simpler, again. You've got your minimum density, which that is twenty units in residential and commercial, commercial districts. And then in a mixed-use structure, the minimum density is twelve units. Again, no maximum density. We do have, you'll see in the bottom clause there, there's a, if you are building less than twenty units per acre in a mixed-use structure, then we want at least ten percent of the total gross floor area in a non-residential use. So the reason that this is significant is that in our mixed-use commercial district right now, there is a minimum sixty percent commercial requirement to forty percent residential, um, commercial allowance. So under this current provision, our only requirement is that you have ten percent commercial when you're in a mixed-use structure on the ground floor. The rest can be residential. And that's just for the, this income-qualified housing.
It would be loosening up that requirement quite a bit.
Exactly. And that was also, that was the feedback that we kind of got from our workshops, was that people were, some developers were concerned about being able to meet that sixty to forty percent commercial to residential requirement in our existing mixed-use commercial zone. So for income-qualified housing, especially if you're building a mixed-use structure, we wanna encourage you to build as much income-qualified housing as possible. We still need to require you to build some form of commercial housing or commercial development, but we kind of keep it as minimum as possible. So that's a breakdown. We can start with either, let's start with option one, and then we'll go back to option two.
I'm a little lost. I know we're talking about mixed-use districts, and, but I'm a little confused, like, why we're applying, we're applying residential density standards to them instead of commercial density standards to them? Is that part of the law, or is that a choice?
That is a part of the House Bill, so the House Bill says that we must apply comparable residential density to the commercial use or the commercial district.
Let me ask this question, because perhaps, so I can try to understand what we're trying to do here. So there were several bills from the previous legislature, and then the next legislature, several bills, these included, what's, what's breaking down? What's the problem? What are they trying to force? A fair way to say that, I mean?
Yeah, I think, um, I, I'm gonna give my opinion, again, this is my opinion, but other people in the room who've been doing this a lot longer than I have will probably have different views or additional comments to provide.
You have a better perspective than I did. You have a better perspective than I did.
But um, but I think it's kind of addressing um COVID and uh there's been a lot of commercial storefronts that have kind of been boarded up, lack of use. Um, we we maybe have less people going to the office than we typically saw before COVID. And so I think the state is looking at how can we reappropriate those properties from something that is no longer being used to something that we desperately need, which is housing. Um, so that's why you're seeing again in these bills, one of the earlier ones that we talked about, but isn't, we're not asking for feedback on, was the conversion of commercial to residential. So that was um House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four, and that basically says you can convert a commercial property to a residential use. There are just a few like areas where you can't do that, but in general, um, it's kind of a free for all. There's no income requirements on that. It's just um if you can meet the the standards in the in the bill and in the code.
I would agree with what Haley just said. The only other additional thing I would say is that um the legislature, you know, each of these bills is coming from a different legislator. And that's what's making it so complicated because they're not using the same approach in each bill. And so um, there are all these one offs. Um, as you said previously, um, previous legislatures have tried to deal with this. We had these three bills from the most recent legislature. Haley may talk about one that just passed last month or earlier this month that we're gonna try to fold in. So uh um in the effort to respond to the crisis of the housing supply, they're doing a lot of these like, well, let's try this, let's try this, let's try this. And it's not a very comprehensive approach to addressing the issue, which um makes all these edits um not consistent across the board, which is why it ends up being complicated.
Yeah, it looks like to me, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, but I was gonna say, it looks like to me, they're just trying to burn up FTE. I I mean, I don't see any other thing going on here. Um go ahead and then I have a question, your question.
I can have a two-part question. So maybe, again, just for my own understanding, a fair synopsis might be that option one uh appears to have the fewest minimum standards that need to be met as a result of, say, an improvement. So is staff recommending option one over option two and three simply because an improvement that a developer were to come to the city with? There'd be fewer minimum standards that they must adhere to, so therefore, option one has greater flexibility and may result in more a greater chance of income-driven household being developed.
I think actually our requirement in here was option two was the requirement, just because it was a little simpler than this. So again, what you're seeing on the screen, like we talked about, you're seeing the how we're comparing it, right? So like in the neighborhood commercial, we're saying a minimum density is that sixteen to four, six to fourteen units. And then again, it changes, community commercial, um, major retail commercial and general office. Yeah, um, versus our second option just has um like minimum densities. We have that uh twenty units if you're just uh residential and commercial district or twelve units if you're in a mixed use structure. And then just if you are building a mixed use structure, ten percent of the ground floor has to be a commercial use. That's it for density. Um, it's a little simpler and it allows, I guess you could say, higher density options than um what you're seeing in the NC district, um, probably what you're seeing in the in the CC and the GO district. So higher density options across the board and maybe just a little simpler um requirements.
Yeah, it seems to me that option two is is more more straightforward, a little more, i- i- it seems to lend a little more clarity um to the process and especially for developers who are looking for um land to develop for income qualified housing that um maybe there there's a a um better sense of clarity, no matter what lot they're looking at, versus they have to dive into the weeds a little bit more um on on the zoning under option one, find out what's allowable.
I'm inclined to say option two is better because this other grid is too complicated.
So under uh under general provisions fees, um, can you, so the uh so this is uh, I'm sorry, for a period of affordability, is that the five years that fees would be waived in this situation? This is uh under thirty-three ninety-five minor code corrections, um, two dot one, one thirty-five fees. This period of affordability, is that the five years that um?
Yeah, so the two point one, one thirty-five fees, that's just for uh like an application. So a developer submits an application and they want a fee waiver for the application fee itself. So if they submitted a site plan review, which is typically what we require for any type of development, um, they could get a fee waiver for submitting that application. Um, if they weren't income qualified housing, we generally don't allow a fee waiver for that. Um, and yes, that five years is what we require for the fee waiver. Um, but we also require additional time that you qualify for that income qualified housing for funding sources under the other under the general provisions for income qualified housing. So just to get your fee waiver, you have to say, I agree to five years. But then to build the income qualified housing itself, then we require like the thirty years that it's it's guaranteed to be income qualified housing.
Okay. You have one whole more section to go over, don't you? Or is this it?
This is it. These are the these are the options, unless there are other things that people had questions about. I understand it is a little co- complicated and basically what we were trying to get out of this work session is just how would you like us to proceed with the options that we presented so that we can incorporate them into our staff report? And we can include them in the draft code that then gets approved at the public hearing and then goes forward to city council and Board of County Commissioners.
Sorry. So we're gonna, I guess what I can't get my head around is is that in the other case, option one was kind of, you know, as it is now, kind of open. Um, but if our fear is is that these bills that are coming are not gonna allow us to control the growth of the city, then it seems to me that we need to go to more restrictive options. Um, otherwise, I'd just soon leave it um for us to determine the city, to determine uh what was appropriate for the city in that location at that time. Um, so anyway, that's my decision.
That takes us to almost seven o'clock, so we're gonna roll over into our actual meeting here in just a second.
All right, there are no other questions. Thank you very much. We appreciate your feedback.
Thank you. Uh, do you need to take off before we start?
No.
You said you couldn't come to this section of the meeting.
Oh, I meant um on the second one.
Okay, great.
We're gonna be system seven, we're not, we can't take it off early, right? I mean, we can't create a meeting.
Six fifty-nine.
Oh.
Is there anything we're waiting for? Okay, great. I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. Uh, and our attendance is the same, so we don't need a roll call. Uh, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, those in attendance, please recite the pledge. Those online, please stay muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go to the approval of the minutes from February twenty-first. Are there any corrections to the minutes? It's published in the packet. Oh, great. There are no corrections. And the minutes are approved. Uh, do you have any business from the audience?
Um, so we do have one person who is online. If you would like to speak, you can raise your hand so that we can um allow you to speak under business from the audience. Not seeing a hand raised. And no public in the room, so.
Okay. Well, did you have somebody in the audience? So I will say this. Uh, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online, please keep yourselves unmute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom using the reactions feature or press nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called to want to speak, please state your name and mailing address and keep your comments to three minutes. Okay, uh. Now we have business from the Planning Commission. Are there any reports on council action?
I did show one, yeah, report on city council work session on February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, there are only two agenda items. Uh, the first, uh, councillors discussed peace health, peace health rides, bike share program. And they supported working with Cascadia Mobility on next steps. And the second agenda item was a discussion of master fees and charges, um, annual updates, where the council reviewed appropriateness of fees and charges.
Commissioner Thompson, can you speak a little louder, please? I don't think everybody can hear you.
Okay. Do we start from the beginning or was I?
Go for it.
It's good.
Where's the microphone? So I know.
Um, it's actually tied to.
It's way over there. Okay.
Sarah, he's loud and clear. It's good.
Okay.
Just keep rolling.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry. I'm clear up here, so.
Okay, well, I can start one more time. Yeah, there's two agenda items for the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four city council session. Um, the councillors discussed the peace health rides, bike share program, and they supported working with Cascadia Mobility on next steps. And the second agenda item was the master fees and charges, annual update for twenty twenty-four. And the council reviewed appropriateness of fees and charges for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And that'll do it. Thank you.
So I had two, uh, January sixteenth, there was no meeting, and then uh March eleventh uh was interviews for bi- bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, budget committee uh interviews, uh, then public library advisory board interviews and Springfield uh History Museum Advisory Committee interviews. That was the session, uh, please session.
Okay. Any other reports? And any other business from the Planning Commission? Okay. Uh, any business from the Development and Public Works Department?
I'll share two things. One is, um, you've been having meetings about once a month, but we're coming into a busy time. So plan on twice a month. Uh, with some major agenda items coming up. So at your next meeting, you will have a public hearing on these code amendments. Um, and that will be by yourselves, but prior to that would be a joint um work session and public hearing with Land County Planning Commission to go over the Willamette Land Comprehensive Plan, which would be adopted as a land use element of our comprehensive plan. Um, and then following that will be some land use decisions um due to development applications that will be coming your way and such. So um, please do keep on top of your email and get a head start on your packets, because they will will be hefty. Um, and then the other item I wanted to share also is um tomorrow, the city will be launching the information on our website and social media and such about the street bond project. So uh do take a look at um that information so that you're informed. Um, that will be going to election on May twenty-first.
That's all that I have here. Um, Haley, did you get what you needed from us?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Great. Uh, well, that I will adjourn the Planning Commission regular meeting. Good job, everyone.